I call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Is there a motion to certify closed session?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge that Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Taylor, aye.
Mrs. Young, aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook, aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
The next item is at 3.1. This is a public hearing for our capital improvement plan. I do not see any speaker cards, so I wanted to give folks in the audience who maybe didn't fill out your speaker card an opportunity to do so. Hearing and seeing none, I will move on to item 4.1, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. We have two students with us tonight from James River, Mia Pascal Chapman and Elijah Lee, who will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Ms. Hummel has a work commitment tonight, and she is not here, but Ms. Serza, if you would call the roll.
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Ms. Ombi?
Here. Item 4.3, approval of the agenda. Mr. Kelly?
Madam Chair, I would like to motion for approval of the agenda as presented with the exception of I would like to pull section 9.05 Annual Review of School Board's Standard Operating Procedures and move that to our next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just think it's very important that all those school board members be here for approval of the SOP, so I just that's the decision to pull it.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Here. Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
I am here.
Aye. Moving on to item 5.1, the superintendent's announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My report this evening begins with a quick announcement about parent conferences. All WJCC middle schools will host parent teacher conferences this Thursday, October 17th, and the three high schools are wrapping up their conferences as we speak. As you know, the partnership between our parents and schools is incredibly important. Research from the National Coalition for Parent Involvement shows that regardless of their background, students with involved parents and guardians are more likely to have higher grades in test scores, attend school regularly, have better social skills, show improved behavior, and adapt well to school. With that in mind, I want to thank our families who work alongside us to support student learning and achievement. By the way, elementary school conferences, parent teacher conferences will take place next month on November 13th and 14th, so parents, please mark your calendars right now. Moving on to some exciting news from the world of high school sports. Congratulations go out tonight to the Jamestown High School Golf Team. They are the VHSL Class IV State Champions. The team's final score was three under par in yesterday's state golf championship at Williamsburg National Golf Course. We will, of course, invite the team and coaches to a future meeting for a formal school board recognition. And speaking of state champions, Lafayette High School will honor its state championship baseball team with a ring presentation prior to the start of this week's home football game. You may recall that Lafayette came from behind to defeat Riverside High School last win last spring to win the Class A state championship. Congratulations to all of our talented athletes. Madam Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. I know that Ms. Taylor has some announcements. I'll start there and if others have announcements.
All right. I attended the most recent SEAC meeting last week on October 10th. During that meeting, we discussed several important topics, including teacher professional developments centered on inclusive practices, which will take place throughout the school year. We also discussed ongoing exploration into inclusive practices in the school division, as well as the upcoming surveying of general education teachers on this topic. One thing that the committee wanted us to look at was to begin considering how we would like to establish a way in which we can recognize models of successful inclusive practices. And also, there are a few events going on in the area that may be of interest. The Autism Society of Central Virginia will have a screening of the film Autism Goes to College on November 19th at the Bird Theater in Richmond at 7:00 PM. There will also be a kids' night at One Center Tile for Autism on November 16th at the Wisk beginning at 5:00. Registration for this event will open on November 2nd, and the James City County Police will be there assisting with child find identification cards. There will also be a sensory-friendly family movie night held at the James City County Rec Center next Friday, October 25th, beginning at 6:00 PM. And this is just a reminder that the SEAC meetings are open to the public and our next meeting will be on November 14th, which we'll read later. And also, I had an opportunity recently to sit down with Tracy Jones, the principal at Tuano, and school counselor Kendall McLeod to talk with them on their work about making Tuano a RAMP school. And for those not in the school counseling world, this stands for Recognize, Ask a Model Program. And this means that applying for RAMP lets our school counselors take a look at their counseling program and discover areas for improvement in enhancing the program's efforts to contribute to student success.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Are there additional announcements? And then maybe just cycling back to SEAC, so maybe it would be appropriate for the SEAC chair to work with the superintendent's designee on answering that question about guidance. Okay, moving on to students and staff are recognized. We have some recognitions tonight. Ms. Cook and I will be...
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have three recognitions this evening. You may recall us celebrating this young man last spring. Lafayette student John O'Neill earned a spot in the national competition for future business leaders of America after placing in the state competition. Now, we are pleased to celebrate John's first-place win in the category of securities and investments at FBLA's National Conference during the summer. John, please join us at the front of the room to be recognized. John, we're so proud. John, we're proud of what you've accomplished from representing Lafayette and our school division at this national level. The Association of School Business Professionals, Officials International has yet again awarded WJCC Schools Finance Department a Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the fiscal year ended June 2018. This is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting and reflects our finance department's commitment to transparency and high-quality financial reporting. In addition, the Government Finance Officers Association has also awarded the finance department a certificate for their comprehensive annual financial report. I'd like to invite Chief Financial Officer Renee Ewing and members of her team to come up front to accept these awards on behalf of the entire department. And I believe Kelsey Bowen is joining her this morning or this afternoon. Congratulations for a job well done. Our final recognition this evening goes to Technology Services. The technology team earned the 2018 Lenovo Outstanding Service Award for their ability to repair and maintain laptops and desktops with very specific guidelines established by the Lenovo Warranty Program. Daily repairs such as swapping hard drives or replacing laptop screens must be made in a timely, consistent manner. The team is within the top 10% of self-maintainers across the entire North America region. Supervisor Kerry Cram and WJCC Lenovo contact Walt Stichell, please join us up front to be recognized on behalf of the entire team for this outstanding achievement. that concludes student and employee recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Then moving on to item 6.2, the school spotlight, James River Elementary School.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, the school spotlight shines on the Dolphins of James River Elementary School. We are going to hear about a peer helper program that promotes inclusion and equity by purposefully matching students with a buddy to support growth and success. James River Principal Michael Stott is here to tell us more. Welcome, Mr. Stott.
Good evening, Ms. Ombi, School Board, Dr. Heron. We're honored tonight to highlight one of the wonderful programs we offer here at James River Elementary School and to help tell you a little bit about our program and some of our students and two staff members. And I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Jen Smith, one of our school counselors, and Ms. Badami, a special ed teacher.
Thank you. Good evening. This program was established to provide and support a more inclusive environment for our students. We wanted to increase social interactions and friendships amongst groups of students who otherwise do not interact. At James River, the students fill out an application to become a part of the peer buddy program. We then hold an interview with each interested student and ask staff members to fill out a recommendation form on their behalf. Then we make our selection based on all that information. We currently only use fourth and fifth grade students. Each student in our two non-traditional classrooms are then paired with a buddy. This year, we're also expanding our program to include peer mediators to help resolve disagreements that may happen between students. This has been a powerful program at James River. Some of the activities that the buddies participate in together are morning meetings, lunch groups, book buddies, provide academic assistance. And as we get closer to the exceptional games, we try and have a day where we do some collaborative training to get ready. To speak more about the program, we have some of our buddies here to share their experience.
Hello, I'm Mia. I'm here to share my experiences for being a peer buddy. I think the program is fun. I've learned about someone who I wouldn't normally get know much about. I like that I get to help people. Getting to know Elijah made me very happy. I had a lot of fun hanging out with him, and we had a great time at the exceptional games.
Hi, my name is Elijah. I am in the fifth grade. I think a peer buddy is the best. I get to talk with Mia and go to the exceptional games with my friend.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Campbell McDonald Scanlon. I'm in the fifth grade at JRE. I had a lot of fun. I had a great experience working in this peer buddies program. I like being a buddy because I like to help people, which makes me a more well-rounded person. I had a lot of fun being a peer helper with my buddy, who is in middle school now. I liked that I could help him do things that were difficult for him to do on his own. And well, and I had fun throwing a football, and we got along very well together. I would recommend being a peer buddy to anyone who would like to help others. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to the school board. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jude Pelletier, and I'm in fifth grade. I like being a peer buddy because I help I get to help out someone who is different than me, and I would probably not know Micah if I wasn't his buddy. I loved helping him run the race at exceptional games and building marble runs in the classroom.
I had another student who was unable to be here at the last minute, so I'd like to read his statement. Hi, my name is Chance. I'm in the fourth grade. I like my buddy Jesse because he is caring and helps me with my work. And now we'd like to show you some pictures of our kids in action this past year. If you can imagine hearing Toy Story got a friend in me in the background.
I guess we could hum it.
Thank you so much. We're very honored to be here tonight.
Much. Are there comments?
I just can you give us a sense of how often the buddies and their buddies meet and where they interact and how they interact to get ready for the exceptional games, for instance?
Yeah, we try and set it up for Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. So Monday morning meetings, Wednesday lunch, Friday would be like an academic activity, so book buddies or assistants with their work, something like that. And then, as it gets closer to the exceptional games, that Friday turns into that the training piece that we were talking about, so we can get ready for the games.
And this year, they've helped us, like, for example, next week is Unity Week, so we pulled them together and they were able to choose what themes they wanted next week and then to make posters for the school.
Yeah. That was our activity, one of our activities this week.
It's all during the school day.
Mm-hmm.
Any additional comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I've spent a little time down at James River, and one of the things that always impresses me is that the overall atmosphere and environment in that school is phenomenal, and it is so clear that all the different things that you're doing down there really has an impact on kids and their psyche and how they interact with each other. It's a real model, and I'm so glad to see some of the kids come up here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
I think we have a few more comments.
Ah, just...
Don't leave. Wait, don't leave.
It's like they're in a hurry to leave us.
Hang with us.
I'd like to I'd like to jump off from what Dr. Beers was talking about as a model. And I think these school spotlights are great to demonstrate to others other schools, you know, what's going on in one school and to get an opportunity to model this. And I think this is a this is a great program, and I just appreciate the kids coming and the kids' participation in this, because, I mean, really, both sides of the peer get a lot out of the program. And so I really appreciate appreciate them coming tonight, and I appreciate them participating in the program. It's a great thing.
Well, we are we're thankful that the division began the exceptional games, which really was the trigger for us beginning or continuing to building on that, not just having the exceptional games event, but making an actual program that happens throughout the school year. So that's what initiated it.
Yeah, it is, and it's what the driving force is to continue the program. So it's been really a powerful thing, like I said, at James River.
And thank the two of you for your leadership in this in this program. It's it wouldn't happen without the two of you, so I appreciate that.
Wait, wait. Oh. Just gonna go down the road.
Here speaks, and I think then we're good.
Thank you so much for sharing this with us. It makes my counselor heart very happy to see this. And it's so important for the social-emotional learning component, so I'm so glad to see that going on.
I'm just going to segue off of what Mrs. Taylor reported on from the SEAC committee, because this is exactly the kind of programs we want implemented in our schools so that kids that are in because we do have an inclusion model, and this is perfect because your our students are getting actual real-life experience with working with students that and mentoring them and modeling for them. So I applaud your efforts. It's wonderful. Thank you so much.
And so I would just like to say, great job to the students who spoke tonight. Thank you so much for speaking so eloquently. You did a great job. Just to echo what my colleague said, social-emotional growth, I think, is just as important as academics, and anytime we can foster those natural friendships is so important. And then having that connection with exceptional games and hoping that we can foster these relationships through K-12, so it doesn't just stop at James River, but then when they connect to the middle school and then at the high school level, too. So, kudos. And I love I love your color.
I know, right?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lauren Burgundy. Thanks for standing by.
Okay, moving on to citizens' comments, 7.1. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak should have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is of board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts of any or verbal outbursts or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters not considered in public meetings, therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments during the meeting, your comments are being heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated three minutes to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair. My instructions are concluded.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
The first speaker tonight is Tracy Sohoney. I'm sorry.
Try.
It's a little it's got a little Italian to it.
Hello, my name is Tracy Sohoney. I am a professor in the Department of Sociology and Criminal Justice at Old Dominion University. I live in the Kings Point neighborhood, and I'm a parent to a sixth grader and a third grader here in the WJCC school district. I'm here tonight because I'm concerned that our school district continues to ignore the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendation that middle and high schools delay the start of classes until 8:30 AM or later. Virtually every research study that has investigated the impact of school start times on student outcomes has found evidence of the positive benefits of later start times for teenagers. These benefits include school outcomes, including improved enrollment and attendance and a decrease in tardiness, less sleeping in class, a decrease in disciplinary actions, improved grades, and increase and an increase in college admission test scores. The impact of these these studies also indicate an impact beyond just the classroom, including a decrease in car accidents involving teen drivers, and decrease in levels of depression among students, and an increase in the quality of student-family interactions. This is a health issue as teenagers' bodies and brains are continuing to develop, and proper amounts of sleep are an important factor in that development. Later school start times have been shown to increase the amount of sleep that students receive after school start times are moved to a later time. Furthermore, better GPAs and improved college admission test scores improve our students' chances of success beyond high school. I do understand that this kind of change does not come easily. Clearly, there are difficulties in implementing this policy due to the limited number of buses and bus drivers, and the impact on extracurricular activities, as well as the impact on families that rely on teenagers to provide childcare to younger children after school. However, these are issues that can be resolved and that other districts have resolved in order to give their students the best possible chances of success. As a parent, as a college educator, and as a community resident, I find it ridiculous that we continue to have a school start time that we know is damaging to our children, and I think it is vital that we start to make this a priority in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. I believe that concludes...
All the speaker cards that we have.
All the speaker cards that we have. So moving on to item 8.1, the consent agenda. Approval of minutes from the following meetings, September 17th and October 1st of 2019. Item 8.2, financial report, monthly bills and payroll for September 2019. Item 8.3, personnel actions. Item 8.4, resolution R-14-19, School Psychology Awareness Week. Item 8.5, revised policy AA, School Division Legal Status. Item 8.6, retired policy ABA parental partnership. Item 8.7, revised policy AC, nondiscrimination. Item 8.8, revised policy BCB, School Board Officers. Item 8.9, revised policy IGBA, Individualized Education Programs for Students with Disabilities. Item 8.1.0, revised policy JFC, Gang Activity or Association. Item 8.1.1, revised policy JHCL/GBF, Lactation Support. Item 8.1.2, revised policy JJAC, Student-Athlete Concussions During Extracurricular Activities. And lastly, item 8.1.3, revised policies KKA, Service Animals in Public Schools. Is there a motion to approve those as presented?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Ms. Young, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Moving on to item 9.1, appointments to the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee. Young?
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, I move that we approve the appointments of the citizens that are listed in the agenda to the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee for a two-year term ending October 31st, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second. It would probably not be a bad idea to read their names.
Okay, I can do that, if I can pronounce them. Okay, Matthew Basileoni, Ellen Mara, Sharon Green, Bobby Perkins, Lisa Horrell, John Estes, Donna Wilmouth, Matt Isaacson, Daniel O'Doricio, Amber Spicer, and Nicole Staffens, and I apologize if I wrecked your name.
I second that. You did a wonderful job.
Any discussion? Hearing none.
Everyone for being willing to serve.
Yes.
And to serve our community, our students.
Thank you. Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Moving on to item 9.2, appointments to the Student Advisory Committee. Ms. Young?
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we approve appointments of the following citizens to the Student Advisory Committee for a term ending on June 30th, 2021. Hannah Ferry, Liam Hurley, Christopher Knight, Lillian Schneider, James Tisk, and Harper Wagner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Item 9.3, appointments to the Special Education Advisory Committee. Ms. Taylor?
I move that we approve the appointments of the following citizens to the Special Education Advisory Committee for terms ending October 31st, 2021. Monica Grillo, Stephanie Higginbottom, Julia Ward, Erin Westover, and Jason Wheeler.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Item 9.4, award contract for request for proposal number 19-14.
Item 9.4, Award Contract for Request for Proposal Number 19-14122, Writing Intervention Software to No Red Inc. for Grades 9 through 12.
Madam Chair, I move award of Request for Proposal Number 19-14122, Writing Intervention Software to No Red Inc. in the amount of $174,600 for a six-year contract for Grades 9 through 12.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. The next item is 10.1, Discussion on Capital Improvement Plan for FY '21 and FY '20. Dr. Heron has not presented her recommendations yet, and so I was thinking that we, in order to have a thoughtful and hearty conversation, we might want to delay and have that conversation, unless there are burning questions.
So this is a discussion of what was presented to us at the last meeting?
Which I'm reluctant to discuss because it wasn't the superintendent's recommendation, so it was sort of for background information, which is helpful, but until we're responding to something that's been requested, presented to us for consideration, I'm a little reluctant to comment.
Right. I think that we could do a more thoughtful job after we've heard the superintendent's recommendations, which are coming on November 12th.
That's correct.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess I just would like to ask a point of question. Mr. Snipes, if you could at some point give us some information about entrances and exits to schools that have difficulty. I'm thinking specifically of Lafayette. I mean, I was over there the other day and took my life in my own hands crossing that street. And so if there's anything that the county is planning on doing, or if you could update us on that, maybe at the nick when we do have the superintendent's recommendations in front of us. I would appreciate that.
Ms. Young, we can certainly get you some information and provide it to all of the board. It probably won't come up on November 12th because it's not in our current plan for discussion, but we can certainly provide some information for you as a board.
And I guess the other one would be Berkeley Middle, because I was over there the other day. And I have to absolutely congratulate Principal Chikirias for the amazing job he does there. But, I mean, that's another, I think, another troubled spot, and it largely is because of the closed access to Ironbound there, but our Strawberry Plains. So, thank you.
So unless there are additional thoughts, I think we can have, like I said, a more lengthy discussion after hearing more information from the superintendent at the next meeting.
Just to follow up on what Mrs. Young said with regard to traffic calming mechanisms, I guess it would be helpful for this board to understand if that's even possible to put in our CIP as a request or not. I'm not asking for an answer, but I think that's where you were headed, right? So I just wanted to add clarity, because it may or may not even be possible for us to do that, so I think it would be helpful to.
Yeah, I think in my understanding, it is the roads are VDOT issues and not school system or county issues. So they have to, they're funding to change the roads.
I guess that would lead me to the next question. Is there anything we can do to ask VDOT for some help?
Right, so I think there's some, we could just get some clarity around that. So in Berkeley, it would be the city, because they're in charge of their streets, but, I think.
Okay. Moving on to board matters and requests. Item 11, Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I just wanted to report that, I think it was the week before last, I went to Tri Day at Berkeley Middle School, and it was roasted summer squash, and 8th graders were devouring it. So it was really fun to watch that. And also, it was an honor to be at Matthew Whaley when the first lady came for a visit. That was quite amazing, and actually, I saw her again today at an early childhood luncheon, and she was remembering her visit here fondly, so that was nice. And then, Mrs. Young mentioned our visit to Lafayette. Councilmember Barb Ramsey came and toured the school with us, and Dr. Miani gave us a wonderful tour. So glad to be able to do that and visit the school and see, you know, the Building 900 and what our request is in the CIP, in our current adopted CIP, for utilizing that space differently in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, really, the only, I commend members of our staff for the awards that they received tonight. As I've said it many, many times, we have an incredibly talented group of professionals working for us, and just one more example of that other people recognize that too. Having said that, I noticed the price on the, I know a little bit about this, the writing software, which is primarily a grammar-oriented program, but I noticed the price was $174,000. And I have a feeling, over the course of the years to come, we will be relying more and more on instructional software. And I also assume that the cost will either stay the same or, like everything else, it will go up. We have in place an approach to dealing with print material, textbooks. We have committees, generally, there's a school board member in each one of those committees. And all I'm thinking about, and I'm just thinking out loud now, is it may be that sometime in the not, maybe too distant future, that as we approach those larger figures for that kind of instructional material, that we might consider an approach to evaluating those just the way we do in making decisions about textbooks. That was all.
Thank you, Dr. Beers.
Because I know we need that. I know we need that stuff.
Mr. Kelly?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Young?
I just want to segue on to what Ms. Cook talked about. We had the opportunity of being with Dr. Miani at Lafayette High School, and one of the things he showed us, which was fascinating, was the deaf classroom, or it's not deaf, but they're learning sign language, that's the classroom. And they were communicating with each other. That's something I wish I would have learned when I was younger, because I think as we go into more and more inclusion, that's going to become more and more important. And just to address the idea of school start times, one of the things I've thought about often about my high school kids is dragging them out of bed every morning. And I think there's a lot of validity to that. I know that we've discussed it with the school advisory committee, and after having a very lengthy discussion, we kind of came back to the idea that things really shouldn't change, but maybe we need to revisit it. Because I can remember trying to drag my high school kids out at the same time my 1st, 2nd, and 3rd graders were hopping up and down, ready to go to school. And they would have gone at 5:00. They would have been perfectly happy to do that. I wasn't happy being woken up that time of the day, however. But I do think there's a lot of validity to what was spoken about, about the idea of decreasing driving accidents, about kids staying awake in class, about alertness and everything else. So maybe we need to spend some time talking about that, maybe in the future. I know it keeps, we keep coming back to it, but one of the things that is very true at other school divisions that handle this problem, and notably sum up in the northern part of the United, not just the United States, but of Northern Virginia. So anyway, that's just a comment that I was thinking about. Thank you.
Young, Ms. Taylor?
Nothing.
I just wanted to add to Ms. Cook's comments. So just so the listening public knows, the first lady was here to celebrate also ships. So she also had an opportunity to try the squash, and the students at Matthew Whaley tried the squash, and it was great. And so this accolades again to our division staff who work so hard with foundation funding. So that's a great example of community partnering with the school division to create a really great program that children are excited about, and we receive accolades across the state. And also wanted to give a shout out to our counseling department. I attended our College and Career Ready Fair at War Hill with my day job hat on as an employer. And so that was very well put on by staff and students. And I spoke to families and students who are interested in a range of post-secondary options. So thank you to our staff for putting that on annually for our students and the division. And then just wanted to speak to the start times. We have spoken about that a lot, and I don't think there's a board member on here who doesn't believe all of what you said, and the research is very clear. And so it is a very complicated item to address, and so, and we are grappling with so many complicated things. And so it's just a matter of timing. I don't think anyone on this board, I don't, I would speak for everyone, but I think the research is clear, and we are fully aware of what that would do for our children. And as a mom of, you know, still two in the school system, I, yeah, I drag my 10th grader out of bed every day. I hear you. Hear you on that one. So coming up, the next item is item 12.1, Upcoming Events. The School Liaison Committee is meeting on November 13th at 8:00 a.m. in the annex, followed by the Policy Committee the next day, the 14th, in the annex at 8:00 a.m. The Special Education Advisory Committee is meeting also on the 14th at the James City County Rec Center at 6:30 p.m. And then upcoming meetings, we have a closed session on November 12th at 6:00 p.m. in Room 309, followed by a work session at 6:30 in Room 300. We have a closed session on November 19th at 6:00 p.m. here in Stryker, followed by a public hearing on the CIP at 6:30, and then followed by a regular meeting immediately after that.
Madam Chair, I think the 12th is 5:45.
Oh, hello. It is 5:45. Thank you for, yep. So we'll adjust that. Unless there are additional comments, this meeting is adjourned.